United States of America, two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with which I am.
Thank you. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Coleman-Hunt.
Here.
Commissioner Johansson.
Here.
Commissioner Bullock.
Here.
Chair Duncan.
Here.
And Commissioner Aguilar is absent.
Yes. Any corrections to the agenda?
No corrections, Madam Chair.
All right. At this time, we have a couple of Commissioners Bullock and Coleman-Hunt that would like to make disclosure.
I'd like to disclose that my wife owns a company that does business with Tykert and that the decision based in front of me is only based on the evidence presented today and that I have no preconceived opinion or bias toward the applicant.
Thank you.
And I'd like to disclose that I was not present at the last meeting when the EIR was originally presented, but I have viewed the video online and I have reviewed all of the material and I'm fully apprised of the project.
Thank you, Commissioners. At this time, we have a public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wants to address this commission on an item that is not on the agenda. So if you'd like to come up and talk about something, you're more than welcome. At the podium, there is a sign-in sheet for now and at the public hearing to put your name and address, and we ask that you state your name and address when you do your presentation and speak clearly so that the clerk can record accurately the information. Thank you. All right. Seeing no one coming forward, the next action is...
You might have to take the floor.
Oh, okay.
You said items that are not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda, yes. If you're here for something that is already on the agenda, we will have a full public hearing for that. The next item is consent, and we have two sets of minutes from April and June in front of us for consideration.
I move to approve.
Okay. Move to approve. Is there a second?
I will second that.
All those in favor say aye.
I need to abstain.
Okay.
I need to abstain since I was not at the meetings.
Yes, from the June. So, three ayes and one abstention. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? With one abstention, so. Next, we're on to the public hearing. And this is, in front of the Planning Commission, a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to certify the environmental impact report, approve a conditional use permit, and the reclamation plan, and approve the development agreement between the County of Nevada and Tykert Aggregate. Staff will have a presentation for us at this time. And that would be Colleen Shade.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This afternoon, we have the Boca Quarry Expansion Project in front of you. As Chairwoman said, we've got a use permit, reclamation plan, an EIR, as well as a development agreement, and we are asking for recommendations on these items from this body to the Board of Supervisors. So quickly, I'll go through project history. For some of you, you've seen this project before, but I'm not referring to the 1950s. This aggregate source was first mined commercially in the 50s, and in the early 1980s, the 15-acre quarry received a permit and had the reclamation plan approved. In 2005, the mineral extraction zoning overlay was added to this forest zoning area that identifies it as a, in particular, a special place where there are minerals, and in Nevada County, that is an important resource. And around that same time, Tykert became the new operator of the site. In 2006, a revised permit was issued that reflected the actual existing footprint and revised access route, and we'll talk a little bit about that later. And they also, at that time, came into SMARA consistency. SMARA is the state mining law. And in 2010, Tykert came to the county with an application for an expansion, and a mitigated NEGDEC was prepared, it was approved, and appealed. The applicant then came back and had an EIR prepared. That EIR went all the way through the process, and a final EIR was prepared, and new information came to light that had not been analyzed prior, and at that time, it was decided it would be best to recirculate the environmental document to include the new analysis for that new information. So that's where we are today, and the document has been updated and recirculated. The project description by the numbers, we've got a 230-acre project site. The existing east pit is 40 acres. The application is for an expansion of 118-acre west pit, taking the total extraction and disturbance area to 158 acres. A 1 million ton annual extraction cap is part of the project description, with a 17 million ton extraction camp being proposed for the life of the project, which is 30 years. 560 truckloads maximum per day. 22-acre off-site improvement area, which entails about a mile point two of off-site pavement widening, shoulder improvements, and site distance improvements. The haul route for the quarry is West Hinton Road. This was a major area of contention previously, and Tykert improved the West Hinton Road into the quarry so that they could then use that road as their only haul route and no longer needed to go through or impact the community of Hurstdale. Excavation will be completed by dozers, scrapers, drills, and blasting. And materials processing today occurs in the east pit, and materials processing will continue in the east pit when the west pit is under operations. And the project description has a full stormwater pollution prevention program, and part of that is zero discharge detention basin, so there will be no discharge leaving this site Operating schedule, May 1st through October 31st, so approximately half a year. Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and on Saturdays, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Occasionally, there'll be a need to expand those hours, 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., based on market demand and operational needs. Periodic 24-hour service will be required, so nighttime work for projects that are, as we're seeing more and more of, operating at nighttime to avoid congestion during the day on our highways. And this operation is for load-out only, the nighttime hours. Blasting could occur up to two times per week, Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. A part of this approval is the project reclamation plan. This plan requires also an approval by the Department of Conservation. The plan includes restoring conditions to these two quarry pits, to that which is required by the county zoning for forest. Phasing, mining, and reclamation will and can occur sometimes concurrently. And as an example, when Phase 1, which is the east pit, is completed, as the operator is starting on Phase 2, they will be concurrently reclaiming, restoring the area in the east pit, Phase 1. Ongoing monitoring, this has been a question in the past, ongoing monitoring is required. It's also a requirement of the State Mining Act, and the county actually has a contractor that annually provides the county with the reports from all of the mines, the active mines in the county. In the end, as part of the reclamation plan, the slopes that remain will be engineered so that you avoid risk of failure of those slopes. And finally, revegetation is required of the site. And there's actually a mitigation measure that came out of the EIR that talks about revegetation with natives so that you're reclaiming and providing wildlife habitat that had been there prior. Lastly, the project development agreement, and this is an agreement that has been entered into, or will be entered into, by Tykert Aggregate, Pamela Dobis, who is the property owner, and Nevada County. The term of the agreement is 30 years from the effective date, and there is a provision that there is a one-time opportunity for a 10-year extension on that. The development agreement includes the existing entitlements, so the 2006 conditional use permit is part of the development agreement and written into the development agreement. Also, the mitigation MMRP that came out of this environmental document that you've just reviewed in the last couple of months. The conditional use permit for this project, as well as the reclamation plan, are all part of that development agreement. The public benefits that have also been integrated into the development agreement, offsite roadway improvements, which include improved sightline, particularly at this intersection that is up on the screen, provides a local source of aggregate, reduces vehicle miles traveled associated with importation of aggregate if this quarry was not in operation, mining of valuable mineral resources, and it generates sales tax revenue. And then I skipped over that this project also, prior to being able to operate in the west pit, pavement widening for bicycles will be implemented on Stampede Meadow Road. I have this slide in here, project objectives, because this is something to keep in mind and I neglected, to introduce Catherine, who is with Helix Environmental. They are a third-party contractor, they're a consultant that did the environmental document. And Catherine is going to be talking about the environmental document, but I wanted to set the stage a little bit here with, when you go into producing an EIR, you clearly articulate what the objectives of the project are so that when you're looking at alternatives, the alternatives must help you to meet your objectives. The objectives include location, and that this location is a, excuse me, the objective is to secure approvals to continue mining of known reserves in Nevada County, and it's convenient to, it's I-80 location. Market position, Tykert being a leading regional provider of aggregate. Production and timeline, extract, crush, and sell approximately 17 million tons of high-grade construction aggregate to meet local needs over a period of 30 years. Another objective is continual onsite employment, that they will also be able to, this is a site that can be reclaimed at the end of its life, and also development agreement providing for the production assurances balanced with the public benefits. And with that, I will turn it over to Catherine.
Like Colleen mentioned, I'll be presenting the environmental analysis for the project. So the environmental analysis evaluated the impacts of the proposed project, and like Colleen mentioned, alternatives to the project which were considered to be feasible in meeting the objectives of the project. Oh, wait, can I go to the next slide, please? So the project alternatives were the no-project alternative in which the operations would resume in the east pit under the existing 2007 use permit and the existing 2007 reclamation plan. There would be no expansion, and the mining would remain at the currently approved 40-acre site, which has approximately an estimated 500,000 tons remaining. The reduced daily production alternative has the same extraction area, total extracted amount, and duration as the proposed project, but the daily production and the annual production are reduced by about 25%. So the daily production would be 2,250-ton limit, and the annual production would be a 250,000-ton limit. The environmental analysis also evaluated, sorry, pardon me, the topics that were addressed in detail in the draft EIR. The draft EIR was circulated for public review from May 22nd to July 8th. The topics that were addressed in detail included geology and soils, hydrology and water quality, biological resources, aesthetics, traffic and circulation, noise, air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, energy, hazards and hazardous materials, cultural and tribal resources, and cumulative impacts. Additional resources were addressed but not evaluated in detail in the EIR because it was found that there would be either no effect or the impacts would be less than significant without a detailed evaluation. Those included agriculture and forestry, land use and planning, mineral resources, population and housing, public services, recreation, and utilities and service systems, and wildfire was also evaluated in the hazardous materials section of the EIR. This table presents the resource areas with the potentially significant impacts that were able to be mitigated to below a level of significance. The column on the left presents the resource that was evaluated, and the column on the right is the impact that was able to be mitigated. So for geology and soils, the manufactured slope stability was a potential impact. Hydrology and water quality were increase in runoff volumes and velocities, potential erosion and sedimentation from changes in stormwater detention basin following project approval, so if there was a change in the design of the stormwater retention basin on the site, that would need to be presented to the county and mitigated. Groundwater supply and recharge at Dobbie Spring, impacts to groundwater quality from contamination of the detention basin. And potential impacts to biological resources were associated with nesting birds during the breeding season, impacts to wetlands in the off-site roadway improvement area if they're unable to be avoided, impacts to wildlife from contamination of the detention basin, impacts to wildlife from night lighting, impacts on vegetation from fugitive dust. For traffic and circulation, the traffic impacts during construction of the off-site roadway improvement area, failure to maintain the authorized haul route and use of the unauthorized haul route, which as Colleen mentioned, has been a major concern, increased hazards associated with inadequate site distance. And for noise, noise impacts from excavation and heavy trucks at future sensitive receptors at the adjacent undeveloped properties, the noise impacts at currently developed properties were found to be less than significant. Nighttime noise impacts during operation at receptors along Hurstdale Road, temporary noise impacts during roadway construction. And for air quality, exceedance of non-attainment criteria air pollutants from vegetation burning, so that would be particulate matter. An exposure to asbestos during operation or roadway construction, that's naturally occurring asbestos that's in the existing rock. For hazards and hazardous materials, potential impacts were associated with storing hazardous materials on the site, accidental release of hazardous materials, risk of wildfire during construction of off-site improvements, and during vegetation clearing and burning at the mine site. And for cultural and tribal resources, impacts associated with the inadvertent discovery of cultural and tribal resources during operation or construction of the off-site roadway improvements, and cumulative impacts to mule deer foraging habitat were identified. Now, all of these impacts were able to be mitigated to a level of less than significant through the mitigation measures that are prescribed in the EIR and through, which are incorporated into the project. Significant and unavoidable impacts were identified for three areas, aesthetics, air quality, and transportation. For aesthetics, the visual character, impacts associated with visual character were from the exposure of rock, which would cause a visual contrast to the surrounding more weathered rock surfaces. So the mitigation to reduce the impacts of that would be to apply varnish to make the exposed rock appear more weathered and more similar to the surrounding weathered rock surfaces.
Natural. Oh. Natural looking.
Yeah, exactly. However, due to the sensitivity of the surrounding land uses, the residents that have, are able to see the mine, those impacts are considered to be significant and unavoidable. And those impacts would be cumulatively considerable, and significant and unavoidable. For transportation and circulation.
Do you want to go ahead?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm working off of an old. So this slide, this slide actually presents what the views would be from Glen Shire, from Glen Shire Drive in the Glen Shire neighborhood. The first, the first picture, all the way to the left, shows the existing conditions, the view where you can see the existing quarry, there's an arrow pointing it out. And the middle picture shows post-project, and this would be a scenario where the entire mine is, is, the entire mine area is disturbed, and there's no reclamation that occurs concurrent with the mining. So it's considered an absolute worst-case scenario, because the reclamation is planned to occur concurrent with the mining.
On the phasing of years, the post-reclamation is how many years after the start?
Well, it's planned to be happening concurrent with the mining, but there's a five-year post-mining timeframe where there's monitoring.
And that assumes no growth in the trees that would further cover up the site?
You're talking about for this simulation?
For these slides, right.
Yes, yes.
Normally, you would anticipate that the growth of vegetation would cover up.
That's a good point, yes. So this is assuming that it's fully exposed and fully disturbed all at one time.
Which is not realistic, unless someone comes in and clear cuts.
And just continues to disturb, disturb those areas. So it's an absolute worst-case scenario.
What's the, what's the distance between where the photo was taken and the mine?
I believe it's over half-mile.
Normally, there's some simulation to anticipate vegetation growth, when you're looking at a series of slides over time, that, to indicate what exactly you could expect. I mean, this just assumes everything stays static.
The second one does, the third shows with reclamation.
Right. I mean, in the foreground, the vegetation, the trees. I mean, if you're standing at the same place taking that photo, you might not see it.
That's a good point, because a lot of those trees look like they're quite small.
They're vigorous, they probably will continue to grow. But just to accurately represent what we're looking at here.
It's a good point.
Fertilizer and water. Plant more.
For transportation and circulation, there's a potential for increased conflicts with bicyclists using Stampede Meadows Road. It's an aggravation of an existing condition, because bicyclists currently using the road don't have existing bike lanes, and they are, they are in conflict with traffic on the road. The project mitigation and the development agreement stipulate the timing of the offsite roadway improvements. With the proposed mitigation and offsite roadway improvements, the conditions will improve over the existing conditions. However, standard bike lanes are not feasible, and the impacts will remain significant and unavoidable. And this is also a cumulatively considerable and significant and unavoidable impact. And this, this diagram shows a conceptual design of where the roadway can be widened to provide for additional paved area for, to accommodate the bicyclists. And there's three proposed vehicle pullouts along the roadway segment, but it also shows some of the constraints along that segment of roadway. On the bottom image, in the crosshatch, there's, you can see that there's an existing wetland that needs to be avoided.
Quick question, is there proposed road improvements north of the top diagram, to continue across the train tracks up to the, to the turnout, to the access road going to the quarry?
The bottom, the bottom one shows the northern segment, so north of the railroad.
Oh, flipped around.
Yeah, it is, it is flipped around. The top image shows the segment of roadway that's south of the railroad tracks, and the bottom image shows the segment that's north of the railroad tracks, that's going up to West Hinton Road.
Excuse me, do you have a laser pointer that you can highlight?
I wish, I don't. I don't mind standing.
Can you tell me what the black crosshatch, the words below the crosshatch area say?
That's, wetland.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Maybe for the audience, you could point that out on the slide, the discussion with the locations.
Doesn't show up on the, I guess not showed up on this one.
Is there one for red and a different color?
So this is, these are the railroad tracks, and, I apologize, this isn't very good. The clarity's not very good. This is Hurstdale Road here, and this is Interstate 80. So this is the segment of Stampede Meadows Road that's south of the railroad tracks, and then moving northward, we come onto this portion, and then this is West Hinton Road here. So this is the full segment of Stampede Meadows Road where the roadway improvements are proposed.
Could you hold off until the public comment period? Thank you. But remember that question.
And lastly, significant and unavoidable impacts associated with air quality are from nitrogen oxide and particulate matter emissions that were found to be in excess of the Northern Sierra Air Quality Management District thresholds during operation of the mine. The mitigation, the proposed mitigation includes obtaining a burn permit, and diesel and dust control measures during operation. However, it was found that the mitigation would be unable to reduce those emissions to below those compliance thresholds, and so the impacts would remain significant and unavoidable. And they're also found to be cumulatively considerable and significant and unavoidable. Two written comment letters were received. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm missing my, so this, this slide shows the sensitive, the air quality sensitive receptors that were evaluated in the EIR. Sensitive land uses within a quarter-mile of the project were evaluated, and that included the offsite roadway improvement area. So recreational users in the reservoir, the caretaker residence along Stampede Meadows Road, and the RV park at the intersection of I-80 and Stampede Meadows Road were evaluated for impacts associated with the project. Two written comment letters were received during the public review period, and no comments were received during the public hearing on June 27th. No comments were received by the county or state agencies. One of the comment letters that was received was by the project applicant with minor editorial comments, and a request to clarify the effects of the emissions on human health. And the other comment letter was received from a member of the Hurstdale community representing individuals of the Hurstdale community. The key issues that were identified in those comment letters, and in addition, one planning commissioner requested share the roadsides during the June 27 public hearing. The key issues that are listed here don't list absolutely every single comment that was made, but comments that were common themes throughout the comments that we received. And that included concerns about the operating schedule, inconsistencies identified in the recirculated draft EIR, blasting hours that would result in noise impacts, and concerns about the Saturday schedule, 24-hour operation, and associated noise impacts and sleep disturbance. Transportation and circulation topics were use of unauthorized routes through the Hurstdale community for mine operation, and bottling operations, which are not associated with the proposed project. Emergency and public service access, level of service with recreational and peak-hour traffic, and for air quality and analysis of the effects of the emissions on human health. And impacts associated with wildfire, risk of wildfire from blasting, burning, and hazardous materials, and fire suppression resources at the site. In addition, there were comments made about the alternatives analysis, if we would review additional reduced alternatives. And responses to all the comments that were received were addressed in the final EIR, and associated clarification, and supplementary information is also provided in the final EIR. None of the comments resulted in additional analysis, or significant new information that would result in recirculation of the EIR. SEQA requires the lead agency to make written findings for each significant effect of the project prior to approving the project. The project findings included, changes have been required in or incorporated into the project that avoid or substantially lessen the significant environmental effect. No mitigation measures identified in the EIR were rejected as infeasible. And while the no-project and reduced daily production alternatives would reduce impacts from the proposed project, specific legal, social, technological, or other considerations In the, in the event that significant and unavoidable impacts are found for a project, SEQA requires the lead agency to balance the economic, legal, social, technological, or other benefits of a proposed project against its unavoidable environmental risks when considering the approval of the project. And if the economic, legal, social, technological, and other benefits of the project outweigh the unavoidable adverse environmental effects, the adverse environmental effects may be considered acceptable. A statement of overriding considerations was prepared, and the project's overriding considerations are that it's consistent with the general plan and zoning designation, it's a local source of aggregate, it will reduce the vehicle miles traveled associated with aggregate transport, it will reduce air pollutant emissions associated with aggregate transport, and it will have open space reclamation. Employment and sales tax revenue from the aggregate sales will support the local economy by reducing the costs of local construction, and site distance and bicyclist safety improvements would be implemented, and there's a mechanism for roadway maintenance funding through the development agreement.
I'll just quickly go through what the recommended findings are. And I also want to let you know that Tigert Aggregate is prepared to give a presentation on the applicant. And we have received, and I believe they've already been distributed to you, we received an email yesterday, and another email this morning, from Cheryl Andreessen, that identified some areas that they still have some concern with, and I know that that is one other presentation that you'll get to next. So the recommended findings, one is that we, that you recommend to the Board of Supervisors adoption of the findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations, and the mitigation and monitoring program for the Boca Quarry Expansion Project, recirculated environmental impact report, followed by a recommendation to certify the recirculated final environmental impact report. And I want to point out here that these are in a certain order, because they need to be recommended in this order. Second, staff recommends that the, the planning commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the development agreement between Nevada County, Pamela Dobus, and Tigert Aggregate Incorporated to the Board of Supervisors, making findings A through D. Third, recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the conditional use permit for the mapped area that you have in your packet, with conditions of approval incorporating the mitigation, monitoring, and reporting plan, making findings A through L. Recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors Tigert Aggregate Boca Quarry Reclamation Plan and Financial Assurance in accordance with the requirements of the California Surface Mining Act. Nope, I think I've got more here. And, continued, Reclamation Act, found in Public Resource Code, Section 2710. And, let's see, I'm trying to skip through some of this, because you have it in writing here. Nevada County's implementing ordinances as specified in the Nevada County Land Use Code to address reclamation standards and to guide site development, operations, and monitoring, which have been incorporated into the EIR and the conditional use permit, making findings A through I. So with that, staff and our environmental consultant is prepared to entertain any questions you may have, or if you prefer to hear the applicant's presentation.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff or the consultant right now, about anything you've heard?
I have a few.
Hardy?
The presentation described restoring to the forest zoning, the trees, and re-vedge on the flat surfaces where it's been mined and aggregates been removed. Is there going to be an importation of soil and planting native trees back on there? Does it go to that level?
It does.
Okay. And it kind of, to one of the questions that surfaced earlier, when the rock is, as you move from the first phase into the other phases, and you start completing reclamation on the earlier phases, when those rock faces are exposed, how, how long, what's the elapsed time that that will be exposed before it gets varnished over and made aesthetically pleasing again?
I think that is going to be a good question for the applicant, and the reason why I say that is because it's continual, so they will finish with one area, and then they'll use this patina, or natina varnish, and then they'll go to another area. And so it depends on the market, and how much extraction is going to happen before they're going to need to do that. And I think they're probably And I think they're probably prepared to address that further.
That's great. Thank you. I look forward to that. The other one, the road signs we talked about in the meeting in June, it was not depicted the proposed location on this map, and that's fine. I just wanted to confirm that it was within our domain to request certain mitigation, like signs, share the roadway, and the three-foot rule signs for the people driving the trucks to understand that they need to give the cyclist some distance. Is that part of what we can?
There is mitigation in the MMRP that requires the share of the road signs. They don't have that three-foot rule, but it's a state law, so it's addressed that way.
But the language, or the wording on the signs could be added to if the commissioner proposes that.
It could be.
Because there are signs on the roadways that actually indicate three-foot.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And we'll do that under deliberation. Is that right?
How best to take that up? Brian?
Commissioners, I would, depending on what other potential additions or amendments, we might want to address that during deliberations, kind of toward the end, and we'll give a summary of any additional language that we may need to add later. So we'll make a note of that currently.
Okay, the list has started. Rich?
The, it's my understanding that the only letters of concern regarding this project in recent memory that have been received are the two that the commission has. Have you ever received any from the Land Trust, the Waterside Council, Sierra Club, any other environmental organizations that would have a bearing on this project?
We have received none.
Thank you.
And it was circulated to the town of Truckee?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Thank you. Rich?
Yeah. There's max of 560 trucks per day, and you're going to have mining and reclamation. That includes both those trucks. You're bringing in, well, I guess the question is, do they have to bring in soil from off-site, or is the soil being generated and all 560 trucks are mined, you know, raw gravel?
Again, this is where the applicant can provide more detail, but the strategy is they don't want to be coming back with an empty truck if they could have a truck full when they come back. And so that is part of their strategy, and it is discussed in the environmental document that they would be able to bring topsoil back in those empty trucks.
Back hauls are important. Varnish, what's the composition of the varnish? I have a question on that.
Okay, so that's something that the applicant will make note of and have time to respond to when they do their.
And another one for the, you know, put it out there. So you're a local, you're a regional supplier. Is all this gravel going to be going for local, and how is local and regional defined? And then on, I guess Saturday, is there a lot more bicyclists out there than from Monday through Friday? So I think that might be a consideration.
There was, there was a bicyclist count that was conducted in support of the EIR, and the number of bicyclists was fairly minimal. I can take a look and see what day they actually did the count on, if it was, but I believe they did counts on both weekdays and Saturday.
Given the condition of the road, I don't, yeah.
Surprised there were any. Only the intrepid ride the road. Hardy, yes?
One more, quick one. I just, and I know I saw it in the presentation, I've read it in the documents as well. I just want to confirm that the reduced alternative, in staff's opinion through this entire process, does not meet the project goals to create a regional supply.
It does not. There is another, the closest, and the applicant may want to also speak to this. The other location is east of Reno, Sparks area.
So in other words, to create that regional supply, obviously it would circumvent the whole project. The point of the project and that material would have to come all the way from the other east side of Reno or from the Sacramento Valley to come up here to service this area.
Correct.
Thank you.
And the economic generation wouldn't be in Nevada County, it would be located outside. Okay. Marty?
Well, I have several questions, but I think they're questions for the applicant, I mean, for the project proponent, so it's hard for me to tell. So I think maybe I'll wait until that.
Sounds good. At this time, we'll invite the applicant to come up and present their presentation and state their name and address for the record and sign in. While the applicant is taking a minute, it's my understanding that there were additional submissions made for the commission to consider, and those will be distributed today?
The applicant brought a PowerPoint slide presentation.
Okay, so this is it?
Right. And I don't know if there's any extras for the public. I've got one here, if someone, and here's some more, so we can put these.
Chairwoman Duncan, there was.
Go ahead and give one.
And I believe that the letter, as well as a summary from Cheryl Andreessen, has already been distributed to you, so that would be it.
Oh, okay. All right, so we have it in front of us, the additional information that was distributed, and it's in printed form, in addition to the emails that we received. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Michael Smith from Tigert. Before I start, Colleen, are you able to pull up the other PowerPoint? Thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you today. I think maybe to start off, I'd first like to introduce a couple members of our team that have worked literally, most of us since 2005, on this project. So with me today is Tom Hirschbach, who's our Regional Operations Manager, oversees all of our facilities up in the mountain area here, Justin Stein with Tigert, Jim Wiley, and Jesse Yang with Taylor &amp; Wiley, who represent us. And then also, the landowner that we have an agreement with, Pamela Dobus, is in the audience today also. So as we go through this, you guys all ask amazingly prompt and appropriate questions. I'll do my best answer, but if not, we're happy to fill in what we don't get through here in the presentation. I'd also like to thank staff, as mentioned, this has been a long journey, and we've been through a number of folks with staff. But in particular, Colleen has been one of the most professional and thorough planners we've ever had the pleasure of working with. So thank you, Colleen. Rata, thank you on the development agreement. It's been a great time working with you all and trying to get the best project for everybody here. Just a little bit of background real quick. For those who don't know, Tigert is a vertically integrated construction and construction materials company. We hold Contractor's License Number Eight, which is the oldest active license in the state of California. We were established in 1887, and we have literally been up here in the Truckee, Nevada County area since the 1950, or 1960s. So we do have a long-running reputation in the community, one that we want to do our best to maintain and continue with. So with that, whoops, did you change that or did I do that? Okay. I will let you do that then, since you're so on it. Just kind of walk through a few things on here, and for starters for us, and one of the messages that we always try to convey is, we don't get to choose where the rock is. We have to find a rock source that serves our market. So in doing so, zoning plays a big part of this, proximity to access, proximity to neighbors, and so on, all come into play. This particular site, as mentioned, there's been existing facility since the 50s. We began on the site in agreement with Pam Dobus in 2005. As mentioned by staff, the ME, the mineral extraction overlay was put on it in '05 because they also recognized the valuable nature of the rock source. And then one other, just a quick thing I put on here, and this is, a lot of the numbers that we'll show today are very conservative. So by Department of Geology standards, they say roughly 7 million tons of aggregate is required per person. Up in this area, it is a much higher number because you don't have the densities that inner-city folks do have. You're not building up, you're building out, your lots are bigger. So your demand for rock per capita is much higher than what normally exists in a more of an urban environment. And just for quick reference, and I think we all know this, but there's multiple uses. For us, the big thing to get across is, we are, we work both public sector and private sector. One of our biggest clients is the town of Truckee in doing overlays and new roads for the town. In addition, we work for multiple home builders, churches, offices, schools, and so on. So we have, we have a market that is in the entire community, including residential, so.
And the state of California.
And the state, but we also do have operations in Reno, Reno Sparks area. This is, so this is the start of a kind of a bit of a story we wanted to tell. And Commissioner Johansson, you raised the question of what is regional and what is local. Truckee is local, but Truckee is also regional in the standpoint of it's kind of more of a distance. The line that you see, the green line that you see, the circle, is a 30-mile radius from the center of Truckee. In there, you will see three orange triangles, which are three operations that Tigert has right now. In addition, you'll see a couple of the purple and the magenta ones also. While those are in the area, those are all in Nevada. Those are also a much further distance because the radius is as the crow flies versus those locations where they have to commute long distance to get to the particular sites to serve Truckee. So in essence, we're talking Truckee, we're talking North Shore of the Lake, we're talking, you know, all the highways and roadways that lead into that area, roughly within a 30-mile, and it can extend, depending on the nature of the project, and how far, if it's more to the west, that's even a further drive from Reno. But if it's more to the west, maybe we can serve it with one of our other operations outside of the area. So hopefully that helps a little bit, but it's really based on location and travel distance from the mine. This is probably, I'll walk through this a little bit. There's a lot of numbers on here, but I'm going to start with the graph on the bottom right. What we did is, we took our three operations, we combined all the sales that we have done in all three of those, and I should point out that that's the Marthas Valley Quarry, that is our Truckee Quarry, and that is the Boca Quarry, which we're discussing with you today. Those three quarries, historically, over the last 30 years, you can see the peaks and valleys, and I'll walk through them, but on average, it's roughly 465,000 tons a year is the average over 30 years of what our three quarries combined have produced. So what we're trying to get to is the magnitude of serving that market, and so take out the fact that we own all those. We roughly estimate your market in the Truckee area is about 465,000 tons a year demand for this area. What you see in the green jagged line is our actual production over the years. You can see roughly in 19, well, starting in 1988, we were much, much below, we first hit a first peak in '96, when the market was booming a little bit, another peak in 2001, which the market was also strong then, and then the biggest peak in 2007. That peak, and to the left, we've kind of identified some of the projects in recent years that we have worked on. I think that, for the most part, that peak coincides with what was a very strong residential market, combined with a very strong infrastructure or public works market. In particular, I think some of that rock was used on the 267 bypass that was built. You also have the Marthas Camp and some of the other projects that were going on at the same time. So you see a very significant, it was over a million, 1.1 million tons. This is the reason why we had asked for the opportunity to at least go up to a million tons. We feel that there's a market here, it fluctuates greatly over the years, but historically it has shown that there is a market of a million tons. And the bottom line is, if it's not served locally, that market will still be served. Commissioner Bullock, you kind of raised the point that if it's not coming from us locally, it will come from Reno, it will come from the western side over and towards Sacramento County and so on. The market will dictate how much rock is coming to the area, is the bottom line. Just, back up, I'm sorry, real fast, Colleen. One other item that we just did on there, the bottom graph just shows that since the Great Recession, that number's been dramatically lower, 246,000. I don't know that I have a direct comment on it, other than maybe we don't, since the recession, we're not building a lot of the things the way we used to on very large scales, we're kind of piecemealing it together with residential subdivisions and so on. But we still see that that number could rise, but for the last 10 years, we've only been at about 246. Let's see, yeah, I think that covers it, so let's move on. So this was also talked about by both staff and some of the commissioners, but we see a significant benefit of having a local supply of rock. In particular, and in worst-case scenario, you would add approximately 50,000 additional vehicle miles traveled to the roads if that rock is coming from out of the region. So that's 50,000 trucks roughly coming, or trips, coming for, miles, excuse me, miles traveled, coming from Reno. That has a direct impact on the cost of rock because transportation is one of the leading costs in the price of purchasing rock. So it makes not only projects more viable for your local community, but that local community also includes not only Nevada County, but the town of Truckee, Caltrans, and others who are building your roads in this region. They get rock for cheaper rather than purchasing it from outside the area. I believe it was also mentioned by one of the commissioners, the other upside is all of the tax, any mitigation measure money and so on, it all stays within Nevada County, town of Truckee, so on. It's not in Reno, Clark County, or anywhere outside the state. And then just lastly on this one, we, once again, it's those peaks that we really need to be able to reach. They don't happen often, but we need to do that when we have emergency repairs. For example, we were involved in some of the material for the Orville Dam and some of our plants further down the road. But up in this area, obviously you guys have dams, you have roads, you have bridge structures, all things that, if there's an emergency, that we're able to supply rock for those, in addition to just repairs on local highways and major highway jobs, such as when we did the pass over I-80, Donner Summit Pass a few years ago, so. So just, some of these slides are a little repetitive, I'll go through them very quick. The slide on the left, obviously, is the project area. Slide on the right shows both the east and the west pit. The point here is that we're not utilizing the entire property, a lot of that property remains as buffer around the periphery. And then the one on the left, you can also see the yellow proposed haul route highlighted, and we'll get into that in a different slide, so. Mine plan is basically, we've talked about and shown. One thing, if I can, I'll walk over real quick and then come back. We have a couple phases here, and where that comes into play will be on the reclamation plan, because we mine one section, and then we take the other section's dirt, throw it in there, and that's how we start building up slopes and allowing for replanting to So, like I said, the reclamation plan, you can see once again that differential in the two different mine sites or the phases. We have the same slides as the one on the right, and actually during, while you guys were talking, we took a quick look on, through some mapping, which other people are better than I am on that. It appears that from the Glen Shire Road to the top of that ridge, which would be up in here, I believe, is roughly 1.5 miles. So I think that question came up, and Justin was able to determine that distance. So these are the same slides, so you can go ahead and just kind of click through them again. The second slide, which is that area, which is that 1.5 miles away, and then the last one, where it's reforested. So I think a couple things. One was mentioned, that all the trees in the foreground, over the years, those will all grow up higher as well. In addition, the way that we do reclamation is, we have to clear an entire site, mine it, and then you take dirt and backfill it. So I want to make sure that everybody understands that there'll be, one of the reasons for the varnish is that there'll be this face that's going to be visible until we're done mining that particular area, because we can't put rock back on it, or, excuse me, dirt back on it until you finish mining all of it. So hence the need for the varnish. I don't know that I can give you any more specifics on it, other than it's used in the business, it's used in the operation. Do you have something you want to add to that? Do you have something you want to add to that?
This is a little description, it's plant-based.
So if you'd like, I'll read this in. Okay, so, "Nantina rock formula creates the natural patina on a rock surface by utilizing a high-quality mix of solution-grade oxidizers and soft buffered organic acids. Before treatment, these excavated boulders were bright white, and now they're a beautiful brown shade that complements the surrounding terrain." And there's a picture on here, if anybody cares to see. But the idea is, it's somewhat, I guess, of a temporary fix until the vegetation starts growing back, but it ages it much faster than if you were to let it age on its own. So in going through, what we thought we also wanted to do is, obviously, there's a number of conditions both on the old permit and the new permit. Things that we felt were important to point out, condition A1, which is our project description in essence, but that includes our hours of operations, which I understand the neighbors would like to discuss, blasting and the access route, all of those are in there, and we'll go through those a little bit more. A8 through 841, which is all of our EIR mitigation measures, so all of that is new and on top of what we had previously. Transportation condition for, mitigation measure transportation commission for, which is condition 22, clearly states that we will do some improvements to Stampede Meadow Road, and that's called out a little bit more in a slide forthcoming. Same with 23, which is the bicycle improvements, and we'll show those a little bit more. 31, dust control, I know that one was also raised by some of the neighbors. Combustible materials, fire hazards, so on, we have a slide on that. And then we talk of spark arresters, which assist in prevention of any fire breaking out on the property. So we did similar to what staff did and said, okay, in looking at the letters of the response from the comment and hearing some of the comments, we've identified that these were some of the major issues that were raised by neighbors. The haul route, volume of trucks, hours of operations, including blasting, emergency vehicle access, fire prevention, and bicycle safety. Guys need water up here. Let's start with the haul route, which is obviously something that is very important to the neighbors and something that was agreed to way back in the day. So as noted, we had agreed on our previous application to not utilize the Hurstill Road for a haul route. That still continues to be the case, we're absolutely adamant about using the Stampede Meadows to Hinton accessway. You can see there are little Xs on the Hurstill Access, and any conditions going forward, we readily agree to that state that we would not use that without prior authorization from the county, from the Board of Supervisors. There's no need for us to do that when we've got this other alternative that we've put into place and have been using already. And we will have signs posted at the I-80, so it's clearly calling out the haul route for truckers coming into the site. So this is kind of similar to the other one, and there's a bunch of numbers on here, but what this really, what this slide gets back to is just the volume. Worst-case is 1 million tons per year, as we've requested and called out. It states that it's approximately 1,432 trips per weekday, 1,200 trips per Saturday. What doesn't come out in that, in those numbers, is that our plant can't produce that high during that day, so we could never reach those. I think the number was 560 is roughly what the plant can produce on a daily basis. So even though the volume is up there, it's spread out, and it's only, there's only so much you can do in any given day. So the 570 is what we would have to do, 570 annual tons a year over 17 years to fulfill the life of this mine. If you recall, where the average was 460, so even this number is higher than what we would be looking at on an annual basis. The third bullet is really where we want to get at. The third bullet is, if you look at that average over the last 30 years, the 465,000 tons a year, that equates to roughly 361 trips per day out of the site. It can be lower than that, it can be above that. That is the average of what our historical 30-year projection has shown us would occur at this particular mine. It also is important to note that this, that's also a number that would assume that Marthas and Truckee are both closed, and that's not the case right now. We've got life, a little bit of life in Marthas, more life in Truckee. So that's only if everything else is closed and everything is entirely coming out of our Boca quarry. Maybe just back one quick second. So, yeah, we talked about the 50,000 additional vehicle miles traveled a day, that's the other important one we want to get across. Thanks, Colleen. Hours of operation, this was just to point out, I know that was raised in the letter, 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM are standard hours. There is, obviously, there's the request to do hours that beyond this, those are only to meet anything that's identified as an emergency, or if there's a specification. Caltrans, as mentioned by Colleen, often requires us to do work at night, so we'd have to be loading out our trucks at night to go serve those particular jobs. And then the same holds true for blasting, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The reality is, is that our blasting is always taking place a little later in the day, but in case weather conditions or whatever require us to go early, this is normal. I should also note that what's important on this one is that even going to these hours, there was no impacts identified to any receptors from noise or anything else from our blasting So emergency vehicle access, on the right are just some of the comments that staff wrote back, a little tough to read, but the point here was that even in the worst-case scenario, our level of service is A or B, which still allows for, through traffic as There's no significant impacts to vehicle or bus access, there are also no comments received from any of those agencies regarding their access as well. Get one more point on here. So the other point that we really wanted to make on this is, as we talked about, there's a number of improvements that we're going to be doing on Stampede Meadows Road. There's shoulder widening, there's turnouts, there'll be some signs as requested. We are going to create a scenario that actually has a better roadway system than exists currently if there is an emergency out in that area. There's places for vehicles to turn off, there's room for them now when it's, when there's room available for us to build those improvements. That will now be able to be the case, which doesn't currently exist. So fire prevention, a long list of items that we've included on here. We do have a hazmat plan that we're required to do. We don't store blasting material on the site, we contract out to do that kind of work. So we don't have, our materials on-site are just your normal lubricants and fuels and so on, that oils that we would use on the machinery. We do have a requirement for a timber harvest plan that identifies how we clear the site, how we remove that material. The other thing to note is, once, you know, we're dealing with barren ground, so once we get the heavy equipment on that ground, there's nothing combustible, we're dealing with rock and dirt. The, if, you know, if a fire breaks out, we do have access, and we, you know, certainly we can allow access for the community if they need it through the back way as well. And there is water on-site, as most know, there's not only, you know, the spring on the site, but there's a well that we have on-site that's available, and we also will have a water truck, not only for doing dust suppression, but could be available in emergency The great sign we were proud to find and put on here for Commissioner Bullock, once again, it's the same slide that this staff shared, but to point out, there will be three additional turnouts, the blue highlights areas of shoulder widening that will increase not only visibility but accessibility in and out of those roads. Whatever condition is agreed to between staff and the planning commission, we're also in agreement with that as far as signage, we're happy to do whatever we can to assist the bikers in this area. So just kind of getting down to the end, and a lot of this was already mentioned by staff throughout this presentation, but we just feel strongly that there's a number of project benefits that this particular site and the way that the project is set up that benefit Truckee, Nevada County, and the surrounding area. Certainly, we reduce truck mile trips, vehicle mile travel, which is, creates a better air quality scenario, and I think obviously that's very important up here. We continue to work on some of our other plants, improving air quality as well. So it's important to us. As mentioned, if we can get the rock to the project site cheaper, or excuse me, quicker, it is cheaper for not only the town of Truckee, so better use of taxpayer money, as well as provide other, you know, housing and so on, and more affordably with a local supply of rock. We do pay into, through our development agreement, we have a fee that we pay into for roadway maintenance that doesn't currently exist with the east pit. So any rock that comes out of the west pit will pay, since, I forget the numbers, is it 17 or 12? 19? 19, that's close. 19 cents per ton that goes towards maintenance of the roads that we use, which currently does not exist. Certainly keeping local jobs rather than having them cross over the state line, and as we talked about, also the revenue that's returned from this. And then traffic and bicycle safety improvements that don't exist and would not exist without this project. So really kind of hit on everything, once again, the local source and being able to maintain our presence in this community is something that's important to us since we've been here from some of the 50s. The average for the region of 465 is really a number. I would hope that we can focus a little bit more on because that's reality, but we understand the concerns with the million tons and recognize there are mitigation measures that go with that. But with all this, you know, it's, we will continue to work with staff, with the community on things that are feasible for both sides, on any additional requests that may be made with this. But at the end of the day, we'd like to request that the planning commission recommend support of the project to the Board of Supervisors as outlaid by staff on this. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions if I haven't glossed over them already.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Were your questions adequately addressed in the presentation by the applicant?
Well.
Well, there's a qualification.
I still don't know what comprises an oxidizer.
He's got a photo for you on the phone.
Is it acid?
Yeah, good question. Could be a fruit material.
It says it's natural plant product, but it doesn't say what that is. We can provide the county with the website for the Nantina product, but it does say that it is nontoxic to wildlife and plants.
So no EPA number?
Not that I saw on their website, at least.
Gotcha.
I had a question about that, too, and more about the, does it adhere to the rock permanently, or does it wash away into the creek eventually, or, you know, I was, it's kind of the same question of concern of toxicity to the fisheries there. But if it adheres to the rock and stays there and never moves off the rock, you know.
My understanding is that it's actually kind of absorbed into the rock, onto the face of the rock. Certainly, we can, we can look at this a little bit more and make sure we have responses either back to you or back to the board or whatever, to make sure. But the other thing is that, once again, materials, the plant material and the habitat does start to grow up around it as well, and starts to cover up all of that as part of the process.
If I may add to that, I'm familiar with projects that have used the Nantina product in Lake Tahoe Basin because of the really high visual quality requirements and standards. It adheres to the rock, it doesn't wash off, and it lasts a very long time. Because a lot of these are for road cuts where they're not going to have vegetation growing up, and so they wanted a product that would maintain that color.
Thank you. So you have past experience with it, I think this is the first time that I've heard of that being applied in Nevada County, so our education is continual here. Thank you, Colleen.
Yes, sir.
Just to check my math, you can do about, your production daily is about 442 trips.
Is that, or? The peak production, I think, was 560?
That's what you're allowed, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, not, not.
Not allowed, but that's, but you made a comment that your production's more like 442 trips a day?
The demand.
The demand.
Yeah, that's, it's based on the average demand, yes.
Well, I mean, so it, uh-huh.
I have a question around that, too.
Yeah, there's a question, I guess, my question is that if you're doing that, the demand at 240-some thousand tons, you're going to probably blow that out in 24 days. And if it's 460-some tons, or 1,000 tons, you're going to, you know, about 46 days, you're going to be filling that demand. Is that, am I math right or not?
I'm not sure I'm quite following your numbers on here, but.
Okay.
The, part of this is also based on the amount of tonnage that a truck can hold, too, and so there's a lot of variables in that. You'll see numbers anywhere from like 17 to 18 tons, up to 25 tons. So that really drastically affects the truck trips as well. So maybe if you, with that, if you want to restate it, and I'll see what I can do here.
I guess the point I was making was that, my math shows that in 24 to 46 days, you're going to almost do, meet the demand for the region.
At 442 trips, which demand number, I should ask, is that the 460?
The 460, yeah. Well, 460, you're almost going to be doing 10,000 tons a day.
Yeah, is that trips versus?
It may not be.
It's around trips versus vehicle mile, or travel.
It may not be that important, I'm just saying, it doesn't seem that many days of operation to fill the demand locally.
Yeah, the, in the, for, I think in the EIR, it looked at, just as an aside, roughly 180 days is the number of working days throughout the year. It differs greatly, obviously, on weather and projects, but, so some days may be really high, some days would be nothing.
On the vehicle trips, you talked about, the realist, the reality is that the two other plants, Marthas and Truckee, will be open, and so that trip, that total trip, what would be, what do you expect that actually to be? Not talking about all the different alternatives, but what, is it 200 trips a day or something?
Once again, it's going to vary greatly, not only on market demand, the other thing that I didn't really mention is, so Truckee quarry is a little bit of a different quarry, it's kind of a cinder, it produces some different material, so it depends on who your client is and who you're trying to serve. So it's really variable. I don't, I don't know that we can identify any single trip, or number of trips per day, but it, I know that the Truckee quarry still has a fair amount of life left in it, and so we'll be doing production there, we'll probably be doing production there and at Boca in the next couple of years at the same time possibly.
I have a question about blasting. So I don't know anything about quarry blasting, it just sounds scary to me. I mean, I'm picturing big blasting. And it says that the analysis demonstrates no noise impacts from blasting, and so, and the other thing is that it says that you're going to be blasting seven days a week from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM. I realize it's not going to be consistent, but those are the hours that you're allowed to blast. When you say there's no noise impacts from blasting, from where, standing where?
So I'm going to defer to Catherine on that one, that was part of their analysis in the EIR.
The impacts would be less than significant, so the noise that would be generated by the blasting activities would fall below the county noise thresholds.
Standing, I mean, from how far away? So what I'm thinking is that, you know, I realize there's, there are people who live in the south of the pit, but there's people who recreate on the lake, there's people that, you know, on bicycles, driving, riding by, and I'm just wondering if they're just periodically hearing blasts.
So I think what, there's a couple of things here. One, when you talk about, well, how is a blast not an impact? We're measuring this with a cumulative type of tool instead of a single event tool. And so in terms of the CNEL standard, which is a cumulative, which is measured, and this is only going to happen during the daytime hours, and it's, when you do it in the evening, or you do it early, early morning, or you do it nighttime, there is, there is an addition to that. But this is daytime cumulative noise, and it does not exceed because it's an average. But this is daytime cumulative noise, and it does not exceed, because it's an average during those hours, that one event during, what is it? It's a twelve, twelve-hour time period. And it's a blip, and then that's it, when you're looking at a cumulative standard. So maybe that, so I don't know if that answers part of your question. And then, and then we also have a slide that we can show you that shows all the sensitive receptors, the areas where we have sensitive receptors, and the distance at which those are from where the blast would occur, because that's where the measurement is being taken. Both of those help with your, your question?
A little bit. I just, you know, I'm thinking about things like nesting birds that are nearby, and people who recreate in the area, they don't live there, but they pass through the area and use it for fun. Are they gonna be deterred from going to that area because they're hearing, you know, because it's being known as an area that has a lot of noise that isn't, doesn't feel like you're in the wilderness anymore? So, you know, whether it's cumulative, or whether it's just a blip once in a while, I still think that might be a concern.
One thing to remember, too, is, and I think I understand what you're saying, it's, it's like at the airport, we use the term "single event annoyance." So it's, it's loud, and then it dies down. But you have all this ambient noise in the background, including the biggest gun range in the whole area is right there. So right below their pit is the gun range. It has, you know, gunfire and trap shooting and all kinds of stuff. You have power boats. Not to say that it minimizes what your concern is, because I agree with you a hundred percent on that. But I think it, it's not necessarily a wilderness experience at that location, because you're directly adjacent to Highway eighty. And if you went five miles up the road to Stampede, a lot of that noise goes away, and you're gonna hear just maybe some things on the lake. But, but there's a lot of activity in that general vicinity, there's a lot of things going on.
Okay, thanks.
And maybe if I just, out of some clarification, I mean, obviously, the, the condition limits has to own, no more than twice a week. That's not even something that's, that's not a very common occurrence, and I don't wanna speak for Tom, but in our other locations where we blast, it's every couple of months type of thing. You do a blast, you mine that rock, and then you go to the next phase. So, you know, you may get X number of year, I don't know what that is, but it's, it's not gonna be in the, you know, over a hundred times a year, I don't believe, Tom, is that correct? So we're, we're talking about a much smaller number than what, what the condition allows for. The other item I just pointed out, Jesse brought to my attention, is that maximum noise levels at the receptors due to blasting would be approximately forty-eight to sixty-three dBA L max. So there was a single incident, or a single source incident looked at, so, which is still less than, than what the code requires. Does that answer your, your blasting? And it, for the record, is, it's done, once again, by outside company professionals, they come in strategically, place the material, drop the rock. The idea is that it all just falls upon itself, and that's, that's the easiest way for us to mine it, then.
Because it's drilled, right? And then the explosive is deposited. It's not one of these things where you see it exploding into the air.
No, no. Like I said, the idea is it drops.
Right, it's ruffled down, right.
So I have a question about stormwater runoff, and I don't know whether it's appropriate to bring that up now or at another time.
Well, Colleen said that they would prevent any storm runoff, or anything additional than what currently exists.
We're conditioned to maintain all of our stormwater onsite.
Right. So my question is about the, the, the projection on, and the modeling for precipitation. Is it done based on looking backward in, you know, what the historic precipitation events are? Or is it looking forward, where the climate change models are showing quite a different precipitation, you know, profile?
Sure, sure. I, once again, I'm gonna refer to the IR consultant on this one.
The analysis that's conducted considers the one hundred-year flood event. So it's, it's, it's an established flood event.
Looking backward.
I guess, yeah.
Okay. So, so it is, you know, I don't think that it's gonna have a bearing on this project, but it's just, I, I am frustrated about the fact that we're not taking into consideration, looking forward for the climate modeling that's predicted for, particularly for our region, for higher rainfall and warmer winters, where there's gonna be more water. And the basins that you create for stormwater could overtop, because they're designed for a different era. So, so thank you for that clarification.
Catherine's looking for it right now, but in the hydrology section, the water quality and hydro section, it talks about the zero discharge design of the basins in the quarry. And typically, basins are, are designed for a twenty-year, one-hour event. These are designed for a hundred-year event happening, and I'm trying to, she's searching, that happened twice in three days, two one-hundred-year events. So they, they are, they exceed what the current, and I, I recognize and appreciate what you're saying in terms of, of are we still looking forward to what those two hundred-year events might be? But this is, this is above what is required in a typical storm basin today.
Okay.
So to add to what Colleen was saying, as she mentioned, the SMARA requires the use of a twenty-year, one-hour storm event, but the project assumed that two one-hundred-year, twenty-four-hour storm events would occur within a seven-day period to size the basin. And with the two noted storms generating approximately thirty-two percent of the average annual precipitation at the site within the week.
So they deliberately upsized the size of the basin. But I, I recognize it's not, you know, the science is still, still in the works and trying to predict exactly what kind of standard we should be managing toward, but.
And maybe if I could just weigh in, too, just as a reminder, our requirement is that we don't allow anything to leave site. So if for whatever reason it's looking like those aren't gonna work, we will have to increase the, the retention area onsite, regardless of, of what the storm level is.
That was, that was my point.
Sorry.
Commissioner, I just wanted to add that there's annual inspections as well. So if there's evidence that those basins are not sized adequately, that will be something that would be required to be fixed.
What I read in, in here is this, it's a every-seven-year inspection, but, and that's why I was questioning, I don't know if seven years, I mean.
Well, we do annual inspections with reporting to SMARA, so working with our, our consultant that does those annual inspections to ensure that conditions are being followed. That would be something that we can ensure that is monitored every year, not just annual, or every seven years through the regional, regional board.
Because the county contracts with a consultant who does annual monitorings, and then reports back on all the mining sites in the county.
That's correct. That's correct. And then we submit those reports to SMARA, or to the state, DMR.
For, for the record, also, we, so we, the east site, which is already permitted, it's currently listed as idle, which is a technical term with SMARA. We continually have done annual inspections on that site, even as an idle site, where we have to go out with the contractor, the contract planner, to look at the site, make sure that fencing is in place, no erosion is taking place, water's not leaving the sites, et cetera. And, and also, I think this also came up, but we do maintain a bond on the site, that if we were ever to walk away, there is a bond in the name of Nevada County that, that they can hire somebody to fix the entire site. And that goes up, and it's looked at annually with those inspections, the value of that bond.
All right, thank you. Any other questions at this point? Hardy?
A quick staff question. Can the, can use permit be transferred or sold to future entities?
It runs with the land?
That's correct. It runs with the land. So if an owner came in, they would be subject and bound by the same conditions of approval.
But providing the maximum output approved in the use permit, they could come in and meet that, they'd be within the bounds of the permit?
Correct, yes.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, staff, do you have anything to add at this time?
Not at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay. Well, let's open it up for the public hearing. For those in the audience who've been waiting patiently, and I hope you've been hearing the presentation, we welcome you to come forward. There's a sign-in sheet, and we look forward to hearing from you.
My name is Ronald Lag. I live in Reno, but I have a house in Herschdale, and, which I purchased in nineteen sixty-nine. So it's fifty years in June it was, I've had that house. And I, we spend a lot of time up here. And I just wanna talk about a few things. First, I wanna say that I support the, is that loud enough? I support the reduced alternative for this project for the numerous reasons we have presented to the commissioners, which they reserved in a response letter and separately today. My main concern is Stampede Metals Road and railroad tracks. I've seen it traffic backed up on Saturdays and Sundays with boats, motorhomes, campers, trucks, cars, all the way from the railroad tracks, maybe a mile and a half towards Stampede. And it happens because it's, there's thirty-seven, approximately thirty-seven trains a day, both east and west, coming through that, that intersection there with, with, with the railroad crossings. And because of that, there's some dangers involved. I'd like to ask one question before we go on, about the, the trucks, if, say, just say average three hundred and sixty loads a day, now that's going out. But you said most of the, a lot of times, those trucks fill up with gravel or dirt coming back in, so that you gotta double that. And they have to go back in the same way across the railroad track, right? Am I right?
Thank you. All questions will be addressed at the end of the public hearing.
Okay.
No, all, all questions will be addressed at the end.
Okay, you can answer that?
Not right now.
Okay. Anyway, because of the, the traffic on weekends in the summer, that road is gonna be completely blocked with trucks coming out, coming out of, on the Stampede Metals Road where it crossed, comes back, and back up from the railroad, especially if there's, if there's trains, and also coming in to go to Boca. And I wanted to find out, also, I don't know how wide that railroad crossing is, but it's not very wide. If we get two eighteen-wheelers side by side on that, some coming in, some going out, it's a dangerous situation. Because if you have a lot of trucks going in and out at the same time, they could get stopped on the tracks, and be ruined on the tracks, and a train will come along, and there'll be a disaster. That's, that's one of my main concerns. I'm also concerned about the traffic coming from Herschdale and Glenchar in the morning. A lot of people commute to Reno and Truckee. And the school buses, I know they said that, that they could handle that, but if you've got a steady string of trucks coming out of there at six o'clock in the morning, people aren't gonna be able to get on Interstate eighty to get to Truckee. So it's, it's just, there's a lot of little things here that I've been thinking about for quite a while, that could happen on that road. And so I'm very concerned about that. That's about all I have to say, except for, let me check my list. About the emergency vehicles, if we got trucks going in and coming out of that road, and we've got an emergency up on Boca Lake, I don't know if an ambulance could get up there. And also even on the freeways, if those freeway enramps are, they're coming off from the, from the west and they're going on from the east, it's, you know, going, I mean, going west and coming back on, going east, it could be times when there's so many trucks backed up, getting down and getting off, that ambulance couldn't get through or a fire truck. Because those roads are, it took me two hours and fifteen minutes to drive from Reno today, this morning, because of the traffic. So anyway, I'm just really concerned about some of those things, and that's why I came. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wick. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Cheryl Andreessen. I live in Herschale with my husband Larry Andreessen. We've actively followed this project with, as the Herschale community, since two thousand and six, and have attended many meetings, both with county planning commissioners, board of supervisors, and many county officials. Some of these meetings have been in our own home, discussing this project when it first was combined with the Herschale Bridges. I've fully read every page of these documents. We have presented you with a response from many in our community today with many concerns. Some of these concerns were addressed in the final EIR, but are still issues for us today. We have presented you all today with an outline of issues and concerns we would like to have discussed, as three minutes does not give ample time to bring up all of these issues. In the past, we were given opportunity to go over mitigation measures and conditions of this permit. We would like this opportunity today. We ask that you strongly consider the reduced alternative for this project, as it seems to be the best overall alternative when considering environmental impacts to the overall region. We ask that you take the impacts, which are significant and unavoidable, into consideration before signing the findings of fact and statement overriding considerations for this project. The development agreement is still not clearly understood, and a clear explanation as to the necessity of this agreement would also be appreciated. As you all know, truck traffic and use of Herschale Road is the utmost concern of many in the Herschale community. Our bridges are being reconstructed, and we want full assurance they will not be used for any truck traffic in the future. And would like to have a condition, fully stating the use of Herschale Road will never, or the bridges, be used for the lifetime of this permit of thirty years. All of these impacts will be just that, an impact for thirty years. Thank you for your full consideration considering this project. I read through the past minutes and saw that both Commissioner Aguilera and Commissioner Duncan were present at the past hearings, and are fully aware of our past issues. You've been presented today a list of our concerns, and I'm not sure how you wanna go about going through those, if you want me to do, if you wanna do it as we did with Tigert's presentation, or how you would like to do that.
Staff is going to go through them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andreessen.
Oh, sorry.
Larry Andreessen, been resident in the area since nineteen And we, we very much appreciate Tigert's effort to come up with the alternative routes so the traffic doesn't have to be routed through, through Herschale. My question is, I heard in the presentation that a typical bike lane was not feasible. I was curious as to why it would not be feasible. If you have a couple of 18-wheelers that are eight feet, eight and a half feet wide with trailers on that road, I know that there's some improvements made, but I don't understand why you couldn't have a full, a full bike path to, for the safety of the bikers. I've heard mentioned that the bike count was minimal, but it fluctuates. I've seen times when there's hundreds of bikes at different events throughout the summer. So I think a count on one weekend doesn't represent what could be possible throughout the rest of the, of the season. And I hear a lot of emphasis placed on the economic benefits that the county would lose if this aggregate was outsourced through east of Reno. But there is another aggregate source in town, in Nevada County, and I was wondering if that had been considered as maybe an option to the reduced alternative, so that the other supplier in town could possibly pick up the slack. We wouldn't lose the economic benefit that way. The noise analysis, I hear a lot about blasting. Well, the blasting is not necessarily the noisiest part of it, it's usually the drilling. And I wondered if drilling noise was, was analyzed, and also the loading of the trucks, dropping the rocks into steel bins can make a lot of noise. But I also heard that it's next to the shooting range, so I'm not sure if, if it would be noisier than shooting, so. And also with the other aggregate source in town, the vehicle, the vehicle miles, what is it, the vehicle?
Miles traveled.
Miles traveled. That pit is, or source is actually, I believe, closer to town, so it may even reduce the vehicle miles traveled. That's all, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Andreessen. Is there anyone else?
I'm a resident of the Buckhorn Ridge subdivision, fairly near the quarry site, and I'm an intrepid cyclist, interested in the road widening. I want some, wanted to have some clarification. Is Tigert going to financially be responsible for the widening, widening of the county road? And secondly, if you adopt the recommendation of staff and the county approves the project, does that mean that the road widening is a mandatory condition to the operation of the, of the pit? So those are my only questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kahn. Anyone else? Come on up, you get your chance at the podium. If anyone else in the audience wants to speak, I might suggest that you take a seat in the front row and you'll be able to get up here promptly.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Freeman. I live in the Herschale community. As I was listening to the presentations, I was taking notes, so I might be reading some of these, I might be reading all of it. Some of my concerns that I've had just over time, in the short time that I've known about this expansion, includes a little bit of a lack of communication in regards to this expansion. What I've learned today from the Tigert presentation is that this, this has been a desired site or expansion since 2005. So it's my guess that there is quite an extensive mailing list that includes Herschale residents that have sort of been on record. And so I find it interesting that those were, that we were not included, you know, when this came about, like I had to learn about it through a neighbor who learned about it, sort of maybe reading an article or something. So it'd be nice to just, you know, with something this important to the community, it'd be nice to just maybe do, you know, due diligence on communication. When it comes to Truckee, there's already, in my view, just listening to the presentation, there's kind of, it sounds like there's already, you know, local options for aggregates. And then also, it sounds like there is more aggregate or more mines in the Reno area. And, and I hear a lot about this, how it's going to be better for taxpayers, how it's going to be cheaper to get it because it's closer, but I would really like to see, you know, before this is approved, it'd be really interesting to see those hard numbers. Like what is the price paid in that Reno area versus what's the price going to be paid from the Boca site and things like that? As well as, if you think about, yes, it's, it's more mileage that has to be driven, but I just find it interesting, like, it'd be interesting to see those hard numbers as a taxpayer, I'd like to see those. Also that, anyway, I'm running out of time, but I walk my dog near the Martis Dam all the time, and that's where the other, one of the Tigert sites is located, and it's, it's really noisy. It's really loud, there's trucks, there's, there's like, there's all kinds of action going on in that site, and I kind of worry that that's what's going to exist if this expansion happens. And also, I'd like to know when the bike count was taken, because the Pyramid to Tahoe Trail has been completed or is about to be completed, and we're going to see, we already see an increase in bikers and cyclists in the area, and I think that increase is going to, going to continue, so. And then maybe lastly, no, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. If you have a last statement to make, you're welcome to do that.
Oh, it's okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to staff with response to what we heard, and the applicant also might want to add additional information. And at what point are we going to hear the summarization of Ms. Andreessen's comments that she presented to the commission?
Since we received the summary this morning, I, I'm assuming that the summary is of what we received yesterday, which we really appreciate all the work, because that was a lot of work that you went through to put all of that together. And so assuming that what we received today is a complete summary, I did review the whole document that was sent to us yesterday, and there are no new impacts, potential impacts, that have not been addressed in either the draft environmental impact or the final, and I should say the recirculated draft environmental impact and the recirculated final environmental impact, as well as the supporting documents, such as what's detailed in the reclamation plan, what's detailed in the development agreement, and what is detailed in the conditions of approval, which include the mitigation measures. And, and Michael Smith with Tigert had, had identified some of these places that you can find the information in the document. And, and a lot of the concerns that were brought up in the document that came to us yesterday are found in the condition number one, in the condition of approval that is, that is attached to this packet. And it includes ours, it includes that the only haul route that can be used is, is West Hinton. So it, all of those documents address the comments that came into us yesterday.
And so there were nothing substantially new?
There are no new potential impacts that were identified.
Okay. Thank you. That's the end of the public hearing. Thank you.
If, if you would like, and I hate to put her on the, Jessica Hankins from our Public Works might be able to address, the width of that road is, and so this is, we talked about these intersections in the document.
Right.
And didn't talk about two semis going side to side, but in terms of the widths and the standards that are being met.
Right.
They are being met.
Right. And then what about the railroad crossing?
I was going to ask Jessica if she knows what the width of that is.
Okay.
No.
Jessica, you prepared to come up? Jessica Hankins is, used to be with, a planner with the planning department, she's now in the transportation department for the county, so she is staff to this commission at times when we have transportation issues.
Thank you, Chair Duncan. Again, Jessica Hankins, Public Works Project Manager, just for the record. I, I'm sorry, I don't know what the width on that railroad crossing is. I wasn't prepared with that, I don't know if you've got that information in the EIR. In terms of the width of the, of the new improvements, is that one of the questions that I'm understanding? The width on the?
Yes.
Striping?
The proposed end-to-bike paths adjacent, and why or why, why they can't come up to?
Right.
Right, okay.
So my understanding is that the road will be widened to 32 feet. A standard bicycle lane is four feet, and typically for a road like this, we'd be looking at a section that had two 12-foot lanes, so that's 24 feet of, of road lane for vehicles traveling, and then the four feet on the sides. We didn't want to sign it as a bicycle route necessarily, or a Class II bike lane, because it's not continuous along that entire route.
But the surface will be?
Yes.
Class II.
With the possible exception of the bridge and, and the railroad tracks.
To answer the other question from Mr. Kahn, is the road paid for by Tigert, or is it paid for through mitigation funds that Tigert's given the county?
The mitigation states that Tigert is responsible for actually doing the, constructing those improvements prior to any operations. So that will be done through an encroachment permit, and Public Works will oversee that, will review and approve the plans. Any signage that goes up will have to be reviewed and approved by us as well. I did have a comment on signage, if that's okay to make that right now? On the, let's see, the pass, you wanted a three-foot minimum bicycle sign. I don't know if we want to specify this in the project description, or a mitigation measure or condition, but that, all of the signs that we put out there will need to comply with the manual on uniform traffic control devices, or the MUTCD. So that'll be something that we'll take care of through the encroachment permit process. And that particular sign that you're requesting is, just for the record, is an R117, and then in parentheses, CA. That's the specific sign. The signs do change over time, every year they update them, so we wouldn't necessarily want to commit to having that sign out there for 30 years. We just want to make sure that that can remain flexible, depending on what's in the MUTCD at any given time. And that's more of a comment to planning.
I have a question that was raised by, I don't remember the gentleman's name, but the, the first speaker, about emergency vehicles, and if the road is, is impacted with a lot of traffic, a lot of trucks, can emergency vehicles get through? And I was curious if emergency vehicles, if the road through the quarry that's the Hersch, what is it called, the Herschman, the Herschale Road that goes through the quarry, can that be an alternate route for emergency vehicles, or is that not feasible?
Well, let's not engage the audience here. Let's keep it to staff at this point, and do you know, Jessica, or do you want to defer that to?
I'm understanding your question, you're asking if emergency vehicles could use Herschale coming up through Hinton on the other side of the Herschale Bridges?
Right, and avoid Stampede and Hinton.
Right. Well, Herschale's a public road, so they can definitely do that. In terms of putting it into, I mean, the, the road across Tigert's property, Hinton, is on private property, but my understanding and my discussions with fire, and we've got fire here to maybe address this a little bit better, is that when they need access, they usually take it from whatever route is available.
Okay, that answered my question, thank you.
Okay, great.
A quick staff question.
Sure.
I think Ms. Freeman, and I've heard it a couple of times today, has talked about the alternative ag sources, and can we just clarify from staff if you're aware of any other significant ag sources that would contribute to the regional supply here that are not included in the two Truckee and Martis operations?
Unless, that was, that's what we've had, unless Tigert would like to add to that. And what I did hear also from Ms. Freeman was, I was just going to add this really quick, the Truckee, that there is the Truckee site, but I think it was articulated by Tigert that it is a different material and for a different use.
And, you know, we permit any other type of mining or aggregate operations, and we don't have any other use permits or rec plans in this area, at least under county jurisdiction. So if there's something else in Reno or Nevada, we're not necessarily aware of that, but we're not aware of anything in this general region other than this, this mine operation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for staff?
Chair Duncan, I might be able to address one of the questions by Ms. Andreessen that I don't think was in the notes, and that was regarding the development agreement, and that is a very unique animal. It's an agreement you go into with private development, especially in uncertain times. It gives them the confidence that they can build without the county changing the rules on them, but in, in accordance with that, then the county always requires public benefit from them. So it's an agreement where hopefully it's a win-win. They can be sure of what their development is, how it's going to track forward under the timeframe, the terms within the development agreement, yet there's also in their, their conditions that they're obligated and mandated to for the public benefits, such as the bike, the line of sight, and so forth. So that's what a development agreement is. It, it grew out of a time when cities and counties were growing so fast that they were changing the conditions daily, and developers just were vesting money and then having the rules changed on them. So that's what that is.
Thank you, Rheta, that was very nice to include it. I'd forgotten about that part, that was one of your questions. Anything else, Commissioners? Do you want to discuss anything? You've got your people here, if you have questions. Do you want to take a break? Is anyone in need of an emergency break before we take action on this item? Do you want a break? Hardy, will you?
I could do that.
Okay, let's take a 10-minute break, and we'll resume after that. And we'll resume after that. Bring us in our break. And we're going to bring it back to the commission. Oops, I think we need to turn on our microphones. I forgot to turn mine on, sorry. Rich, you had a few observations to make.
Yeah. Hopefully, I can articulate this well. But a lot of it is just the intensity of the operation. And reading over your 39 pages, if it was reduced operation, it mitigated a lot of the problems. Am I correct? Okay. So, and that kind of mirrors what's going on today. That type of reduced operation. Having Farm in the Valley and go past Oroville and Paradise. When there's an emergency, everybody kicks in. I could not believe the amount of trucks on the road. I mean, ungodly number. But it got done. I mean, it happened. Everybody worked it out. And the Oroville Dam is now safe. Paradise is getting cleaned up. So I'm kind of leaning, saying, okay, there is already a reduced operation. But if that emergency kicks in, we need to have that buffer as a community. Saturday operations kind of concern me, because the amount of recreation going up into the reservoirs. And I'm not sure if I have a solution for that. I just want to point out that Saturday looks like it's going to be a problem. Because a lot of people go up to recreate, and a lot of bicyclists on the road. And let's leave it like... I'll just leave it there.
Okay. Any questions for staff at this point? Colleen, did you have anything to add?
Not at this point.
Thank you. All right, Hardy. I think we're time for consideration of the action that is in front of us today. On page 37.
I just want to mention that I did as well read all your comments, and I can honor and respect all of them. I think the process, in my opinion, has worked. And like Commissioner... As my fellow commissioners have stated, I think the current use of the property is at that reduced rate. So the goal of the project, really, and all the study and all of this process, was to understand how we could increase the capacity while meeting the needs of the environmental... Meeting CECL requirements, meeting the community. And I think they've done that. I think the applicants have done that. I do have my own concerns. I lived there. I lived there for 25 years. I ride my bike on that road. I put my boat on that lake. I put my... I go out there with my trailer, so I share the same concerns you do. And coming from that perspective, I feel comfortable with the things that are outlined here I'm going to make right now.
All right.
So I will make the first motion, recommend to the Board of Supervisors adoption of the findings, the fact statement of overriding conditions, and the mitigation and monitoring program for the Boca Quarry Expansion Project Recirculated Final Environmental Impact Report Attachment to Exhibit A and B, followed by certification of the Recirculated Final Environmental Impact EIR 11-001, Attachment Number One.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Johansson?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman-Hunt?
Yes.
Chair Duncan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I will move to recommend approval of the development agreement, Attachment Number Three, and Exhibit A through J between Nevada County, Pamela Dobus, and Tyker Aggregates, Inc., to the Board of Supervisors, making finding A through D pursuant to LUDC Section L2 5.18E.
A through D.
A through-
D. Yeah, you said that. Rich, are you seconding this?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Johansson?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman-Hunt?
Yes.
Chair Duncan?
Yes. Motion carries.
I'd like to move to recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the conditional use permit U 11-008 for the mapped area, Attachment Number Four, Exhibit B, with conditions of approval incorporated in the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, Attachment Number Four, Exhibit A, making findings A through L pursuant to LUDC Section L2 5.2C, and recommended approval to the Board of Supervisors, the Tyker Aggregates Boca Quarry Reclamation Plan, RP 11-001, and financial assurances, Attachment Number Four, Exhibit C, in accordance with the requirements of the California Surface Mining and Reclamation Act, found in Public Resource Code 2710, Title 14 of the California Code of Regulations, Section 3700, Nevada County's implementing ordinance, as specified in the Nevada County Land Use Code, Chapter L2 3.22, surface mining permits and reclamation plans to address reclamation standards and to guide site development, operations, and monitoring, which have been incorporated into the EIR and the conditional use permit, making the findings A1 and A through H pursuant to LUDC Section L2 3.22J.1 and L2 3.22J.2A through J2H.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Bullock?
Yes.
Commissioner Johansson?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman-Hunt?
Yes.
Chair Duncan?
Yes. Motion carries.
This is a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. There is, there will be another public hearing where they will take action on what is forwarded to them today. This is forwarded to the Board of Supervisors. And if anyone wants to be on the mailing list that maybe wasn't notified, ask staff and they will take your information and circulate that. Thank you, everyone, for attending. We appreciate your participation.